All right, we're good.
Hello and welcome to the returning of executive session for school committee. Please stand to the side. This meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording on this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand. Thank you, Gilda. And is there anyone making a recording over Zoom? No? Okay. And I would notify the public for Massachusetts meeting was. Do we have any public comments? Okay, I just want to remind everyone, members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public while in the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted to the email. So, committee@falmouth.k12.m a.us. Would you like to make a public comment? Please come to the down room. And tell us your name for the record.
My name's Jacqueline McMurray and I live in North Belmont.
Welcome, Jacqueline.
Thank you for having me. Tonight, I'm taking this opportunity to speak about gender identity. I'm a parent of three students in the Falmouth Public School System, and I'm also a school judgment counselor at North Belmont Elementary. Currently, there's so much misinformation traveling around our community regarding gender identity. We know as educators that knowledge and understanding are power. I'd like to take a moment to share factual information from Boston Children's Hospital, who's home to the first pediatric and adolescent transgender health program in the U.S. Everyone has a gender identity. Some people identify as cisgender, a gender that corresponds with the sex they were assigned at birth. Others identify with the gender that is different from what they were assigned at birth. Regardless, a person may identify as a boy, a girl, both or neither, or they may switch between genders. Through FPS's partnership with McLean Hospital, I've been fortunate to receive educational guidance on how to best support the health and well-being of our transgender and non-binary youth. Last year, my co-counselor and I did gender identity classroom lessons throughout the entire grade level. We read a book called Calvin to our students. Calvin is a story about a transgender boy. He has always been a boy, even if the world sees him as a girl. He knows who he is in his heart and in his mind, but he hasn't yet told his family, friends, or teachers. Calvin tells his dad in school how he feels. Both his dad and the school are incredibly supportive. We talked about what the adults did at school to make Calvin feel welcomed and what we could do to help Calvin feel safe if he was in our classroom. We talked about the beauty in our differences regardless of our race, color, religion, gender identity, age, or disability. Unfortunately, the story of Calvin is not the story of so many youths. Key findings from the Treadmill Project's 23 survey on mental health of LGBTQ youth are 41% of these young people seriously considered attempting suicide in this past year. Fourteen of these, 14% of these young people attempted suicide this past year. The survey asked these young people to describe what a world would look like where we were all accepted. Frequent responses were the words better, happy, normal, free, and peaceful. As leaders, educators, parents, and community members, I ask you to support educational opportunities for all of our K through six on the topic of gender identity. It is imperative that we start as early as elementary school and that we start now. Thank you for taking the time to listen and hopefully opening your hearts and minds so that we can be inclusive to all of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak for public comments? Okay, please come board. Who are you?
Hi, Lauren. I'm Les Masters and I have three kids in North Belmont School District, School District or Will at some point. So, congratulations to everybody with their new school committee seat. I am coming as a follow-up to the family forum that we had maybe a few weeks back where we talked about things that were important to me were gender identity and discipline in the school. As a follow-up to that, Dr. Dur and I exchanged emails, which was great. I received some information on the DUC policies, I'm not sure that's the right term, in how to discipline our children in the school district. And it came clear to me that our hands are really tied in some of the situations that we're experiencing, specifically a child in mom-child classroom continuously physically assaults the students. And so after having some conversations, I was like, oh, should I reach out to, you know, the DUC district or whatever, the DUC's school policies to learn more about it? And I got to thinking, and I met a parent this weekend whose child was again assaulted in my child's classroom last week, and I didn't know about that until this week. And I realized that that's not really my responsibility, that I'm not paid to do this. And I would ask that this school committee, I don't know if it's in our your qualifications, responsibilities, work with the policies that we have and realize that they are not working. And is there anything that we can do with the state of Massachusetts to change the policy so that it's not just reformative, whatever practices, but there's actually discipline in our schools and disciplines with kids and that they're top responsibility? I'd also like to continue to be an advocate that my child not be taught about gender identity until the eighth grade like they are now. That's a message that I would like to influence and not have the school district teach my children about that. So, thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to public comments?
Tammy Inman, mother of four children, four little kids preschool. I would like to start off tonight by saying that the parents speaking up recently and asking questions have no ill intention towards our Falmouth teachers. Parents are genuinely concerned about the education that their children are receiving, with their concerns about excessive screen time, curriculum, discipline issues, but the issues transparency. We are the taxpayers. Taxpayers pay for public education, and recently many are deciding to pull their students out. I think I heard 80 are not going to Falmouth High School. The teachers, families, and faculty should have a say. They should be polled, I believe, students as well, to see where our greatest improvements in work need to be done. Budget and new hires should benefit students and teachers, not administration. I want to make sure that there's full intention of hiring a new wellness teacher for Lawrence School as our children need PE, health, and wellness now more than they ever have. I had heard that the current teacher is retiring, that there is 200 students who chose wellness as an elective last year, and if no one is hired, they will be forced to choose something else. I hope that it's untrue that someone is not being planned to be hired. And that I make a motion that that is very important. I think families and teachers would also like Chromebooks to stay in the schools and to bring back all of the charging stations. I would love to propose that K through four don't have Chromebooks at all. But although administration has claimed that they're only used as a tool, if they were to remove them, we would find that they are much more part of the school's curriculum than we're being told. I would finally like to share a statement from an FPS member. Hey Tammy, I'm saying this privately and off the record as an FPS member as I fear repercussions of being publicly vocal. I'm glad you're addressing these issues and concerns that we all have. It needs to be heard from parents. It amazes me that parents and some school committee members are just now realizing that our superintendent, what staff members have realized for the last three years. No one seemed to believe the teachers or want to listen, and so many that are super, so many that thought our superintendent was a saint, we all know is a wolf in sheep's clothing. There are so many issues, but I thank you for this and making our voices heard.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else for public comment? I'm just going to look on our attendees and see if anyone's hand is up. None seen. So, I'd like to move on. And welcome the new elected school committee members. So, I'd like to welcome that. This is student, thank you. I'd like to welcome Heather Goldstone and I'd now like to move on to student advisory where we have Ms. Anna Bennett. Oh, sorry, just getting
Thank you. Sorry, no, I don't leave the mission statement. This is Okay. This is from Anthony at G Chicken School. And what do you like, Lucas? I like Jim the most. This is from Vicky at MPS, a class pet to play with, AKA dog. This is from Elliot at Morse Park. My school life would be better if we had more time to eat lunch. I feel rushed to eat my food. I want to be able to eat my food carefully and not be rushed. Thank you.
Mike, you bring up a good point on the mission statement and vision. Maybe you'd like to read that. I know it's a little out of order, but
Yes, FPS mission, Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our cover their empowerment, pursue their goal of curiosity, integrity, and legitimacy. FPS vision, Clippers are creative, intuitive, and engaged learners who contribute in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Mike. Now, I'd like to welcome Anna Bennett, who's student advisory.
Thank you for having me. Mary, it's been a pretty big month in Falmouth and especially at the high school. We started off the month, our I think our theater company went on Alameda, which was great. And then the following year was junior prom, and after prom, it was a great success. And I think I speak for all students in attendance in thanking the town and everyone that volunteered and put in all the time and effort to make our prom, your prom successful and safe and enjoyable for all of us. Thanks for wrapping up this week. We have several of our teams heading into the state tournament, across and boys across. And I believe baseball. And then our student government is, we're trying to do things a little bit at home this year, which normally we have elections for class officers in the fall, and this year we voted to have them in the spring, like the upcoming. That way, class officers in every grade, including the upcoming freshmen, will have the opportunity to work with each other and faculty advisors over the summer and really get rolling in the fall. I think this is great. And finally, I just want to share with you something that I'm personally really excited about. I myself would appear with my infant Celeste, working on a project to create a space at home high school that is by students and for students. And we have this like, yeah, there's really big like plans and goals and we're in the early stages right now, but it's something that I'm like funded for, I'm looking forward to because I think it'll bring back some of the sense of community. School is here for us, like this for the students, not for the teachers. And, you know, having a space for us made by us is going to be a really, I hope, a really great thing coming into next year. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So, when you said that you're creating a space, do you mean like a student lounge or?
Yeah, something to that effect. So, we wanted to get like a multi a like multi-purpose space that's driven like a student lounge because we are so packed in like academically throughout our day. And like, just if there was a time and like a place that you could go to just either unwind or like buy a place to study. We're looking into different ways that we can utilize this base to really make sure that we make it somewhere that will be useful and helpful for all students. As well as improving like communications and like how like messages are put out like to students.
I have another quick question. Is there a space dedicated or are you looking for a space?
We, right now, our focus is in the like back half of our library, right? And with a couple of like old like bookshelves that like, and we've like, we're working with Ms. Parker, librarian, Mr. McNamara, and Mrs. Prantus to really like push towards it like, you know, this like plan becoming reality. But great.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Anna? Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Mary for the first read of the responsibilities policy.
So, I've actually been hour. So, as you know, this policy, and there is still under review by the policy subcommittee, so it was my mistake. I didn't tell Karen to get out the agenda. So, I would ask that you table, table that until you're done.
Perfect. In that case, I'd like to act on this student discipline policy, J I C. Is there a motion to act on this policy?
You want me to first, whether the members want me to explain?
I would, actually, as I'm saying that out loud.
You decide if not, you make a motion first before you discuss.
So, I thought we can have an explanation, and then we can have a motion, and then we can have the discussion.
And I apologize. Welcome, members. I'm Mary Gans, Director of Policy and Legal Affairs. So, the student discipline policy needed to be revised because in November of 2022, the state amended one of the three student discipline statutes that generally apply to all student discipline law incidents in Massachusetts. The three statutes are master law, chapter 71, section 37H, 37H and a half, and 37H and three quarters. 37H deals with students in possession of a controlled substance, possession of a dangerous weapon, or assault on a staff member. 37H and a half deals with students charged with felonies, and 37H and three quarters covers all other infractions that are not covered by 37H or 37H and a half. So, essentially, 37H and three quarters covers the vast majority of student discipline issues in the schools. In November, the state legislature amended 37H and three quarters to require that schools try alternative remedy before suspending a student unless the school can document that the, the alternative remedies would be unsuitable or counterproductive, or the student's continued presence in school would create a risk for serious bodily injury or serious harm. And so, it doesn't mean that students can't be suspended. They can. And so, there are circumstances where alternative remedies are required, but if they can be documented that they would not work, or the student's presence is an issue, alternative remedies are not mandated, and students can still be disciplined. So, our policy just had to be amended to reflect that new statute, and that's the highlighted language that you see here. I hope that makes sense.
Great. I'd like to make, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah. I know that you know, this is coming down from the state, so we have very little that we can do about it. But I just want to vocalize that I think the state's got this wrong. And from what I've seen students deal with, we had a parent who talked about it today, kids getting assaulted in classrooms. I don't like the message that there has to be, you know, special circumstances in order to defend students. And you can, we can't assault the teacher, we can't assault the student, but if you assault the student, we can still suspend you, but we have to explain why. And having to do those explanations is going to cause some administrators to not take actions that they probably should have, because then they're going to have to explain it to the state. I don't like it. And I hope, whether it's us or somebody else in the state, I hope that somebody puts their foot down and comes back to the state and says, let us deal with this. Because school discipline issues have gotten out of hand, and some of these restorative practices do not work. And sometimes you're revictimizing a kid when a kid gets punched on the playground. And then the restorative practices have them come inside and talk about their differences with each other. Well, the difference is that he just got punched in the face. He doesn't want to, you know, don't, don't make that kid now sit across and try to work out their differences. Maybe there wasn't a difference. Maybe the other kid just decided to punch him in the face. And so, I I understand that we happen to go by what the state said. I just want to make sure that it has been vocalized, that I disagree with it. I think the state got it wrong. And I hope that our administrators are willing to go the extra mile to do what they feel they need to do to make all kids feel safe in our schools and not have to worry about whether or not it's going to come back to them because they didn't write it up correctly. And with that, I'll just
Any other comments, Calvin?
I think, Mary, I don't know, I'm not touching on the spot, but I'm thinking maybe to my understanding of where this, this change came from is to try and undo the the disparities that exist between the racial disparities, students with disabilities that exist in student discipline. Am I right in thinking that that's where this comes from?
Yes, absolutely. And I can point out too that prior to this amendment, alternative remedies were strongly encouraged also. And certain combination quarters was enacted in the first place in 2014 to address disparities and to completely discourage exclusion from school in response to disciplinary incidents because researchers know that excluding from school doesn't necessarily, it's not effective in changing behavior always. They are, one of the main focuses is to address the disparities and students' worth of turn.
Can I ask, Mary, if you would be able to elaborate at all on what it means to document that alternative remedies would be unful or counterproductive?
Yeah, so I actually created a checklist that administrators use that they just I think it would be counterproductive because the culture in the school would be negatively impacted if we do not discipline this student in a traditional way. I mean, that's just one example. Or it's we actually tried alternative remedies last week with this child. This is what we did, and the child is still repeating the same behavior. So, as long as they documented, if DUC comes in and looks at it, and that any principals and assistant principals are doing a great job, they are documenting everything. And that was one of the biggest changes, requiring documentation.
Could I just I understand we talked about this last meeting too. This is from the state. And as long as, and I asked a question about, you don't have to try the methods, as long as there's documentation, the methods will not work hypothetically. I do agree with Bill about you know, having someone, you know, having a student attacked several times or hit several times, and these not working, we should, you know, try something different. But I understand this is a mistake, so that's not a problem.
So, I'd like to make a few comments. I said, for those of you that don't know, I said on policy, and I actually asked Mary all of these similar questions. Being very frustrated as a mom of a child who was assaulted on the playground and trying to look at it not just as a reactive mother, you know, protective mother, but trying to look at it as what's the bigger picture? What's going on with the kid that just hit my son? And I'm trying to not react and look at the whole thing. One of my questions were, was, are we currently documenting? Is that, is this a big change for our administrators? To which Mary said that it's not a big change. Our administrators have been A-plus on documenting on, you know, this is not going, you know, we've done X, Y, and Z. Here's a history with this child, et cetera. Do I think the state got it wrong? I kind of do. Yeah, I mean, I am, I am a parent of you know, like I said, somebody, somebodies that were assaulted, and it's, it's no fun. It's no fun when they tell you about it and the process that goes along with that. Do I think that a change needed to be made to align with some of the some of the imbalance of discipline 100% like? But is this the proper alignment? I'm not really sure. I really kind of don't think it is, but unfortunately, our hands are tied. I think that Mary's done a great job to set up her checklist to support our administrators on how we can keep this as Falmouth as possible while being mindful of not putting a victim across the table from somebody who just assaulted them, who they, they don't even want to go to school tomorrow, let alone sit at the table with them and make amends. Nobody wants to do that. So, that's just my comments on that.
And I'll just add to that. I understand the motive behind why they wanted to make the changes. I just feel like instead of addressing the actual problem, they're taking away a remedy to fix something, and then they're not actually fixing the problem. The problems that there were disparities, and that's, that's in, that's in the heart of the people who are carrying it out. It's not in the remedy itself. And so, I just, I want to make that clear as well. I understand the intent. I guess, I just think they got it wrong.
Can I add something to? I mean, this amendment came as a surprise to everybody, including DUC. And so, there was very little public input or public comment received on it. And I do know that there are some legislators who are against it and are possibly working to maybe make another change. I don't know if that, when or if that will come, but that's the situation.
Mary, could you give us a little history on how DUC was surprised by it when it came from DUC to Falmouth?
Well, DUC, so it was the legislature that adopted it, and there was an amendment, a very long bill. I forget how many pages it was, but the bill was entitled, I can't remember, something about fair instrument of health. Never mentioned student discipline in the title. And in section 29 of that bill was this student discipline piece. Lawyers, DUC, nobody really knew about it until about a week before it was to take effect on November 8th, 2022. So, I was surprised that DUC didn't know about it. When I found out about it, I thought I was negligent in my own, you know, being diligent and trying to keep on top of the laws. But every lawyer I spoke to said, we all just found out about this. And so, lawyers, where I know the mass attorneys were sending out, you know, memos, and we had to wait for DUC guidance. I decided to interpret it myself in certain ways. It was consistent with the DUC guidance that ultimately came out. But I know that there are people who, because it was sort of slipped into a bill very deeply without a lot of public comment, it has created
I just, not about this necessarily, but what you said about there are some legislators looking into this. That would be, Mr. Masterson, that would be an approach to take would be to, you know, contact them because I keep saying this, but there's not much we can do with this, you know, particular policy.
I feel like so with that, we have a motion and a second. Could we get a vote on the discipline policy, J I C? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any? Thank you. Moving on, superintendent, I'd like to congratulate all of our retirees. I'm not a senior seat this year for retirees.
This is pretty consistent with other years. But as you can see, we have some features that have been with us for quite some time, and sad to see them go, but they are going to be missed, but they have done such a wonderful job here in Falmouth. Teachers, teaching assistants. We have our data processing assistant, our computer technician, and our principal, Mr. DeHine at East, and then we have two special education secretaries. So, retirees, so congratulations to everyone. You'll be missed. I'd also like to take this opportunity to announce, and to graduate, Paul Olivera as our new athletic director. I put that on speakerphone. I just wanted to take that opportunity to say welcome, and we're glad you got the job, and we're looking forward to great things. I want to point out at your seat also, you have a graphic. From that meeting, Joan had given a long list of everything we do in the district around social emotional learning. And thank you to Brian Weber for actually taking that information and putting it into a graphic with lots of information about what's going on in the district. And this is actually the first of several graphics that we're going to be developing, but the good ones are going here in the district. So, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Joan. And I hope you enjoy.
Thank you, information.
This is fantastic. I might actually read this one. This is a really good job. I like this law.
Right, but you just, that's the whole point, right? Actually, the whole idea is that maybe we could share a lot of kind of the short bites and get a sense. So, thank you for saying that. You might actually read it. A lot of people do too. Uh, related, related to that, so do we have thoughts about? What to do with these? Like, do, do you already have a plan for distributing it or um, audiences that we want to make sure that you see this? Cause I'm thinking that town meeting members would love this. Um, especially, you know, where, where instead of doing a long presentation at town meeting where, when we're talking about the budget. To be able to have a couple of briefs on different topics that people can just grab as they come in and find out a little bit more. Especially if this is the venue of my mission and it's not, this didn't make it successful in my school. So anyway, I think here's the.
Obviously, you know, the district families, uh, thank you for coming. I think that's a great idea.
Perhaps a platform, support, yes, yeah, absolutely. Well, uh, great, great suggestion. We will make sure that gets out. And then, of course, it'll be on the website.
I'm just submitting, I'm just going to have a stack of them and carry them. So wherever I go, we'll forget. Uh, okay, so the spring's been busy with like art shows, music performance, uh, and the prom. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Sandy Tuni and all the many volunteers. Um, for providing the after prom event. It's just another remarkable example. Of Fama and what they do for our students, so um, it's a fantastic. I don't know if you want to add, because you were down this year.
It's always fabulous. I mean, some of the rooms, if you've never been, it is just unbelievable. The transformation that happens in the rec center. You would never know that that's right. It's amazing.
So many activities and just to provide that opportunity so our students are somewhere safe.
They still have the bell where you jump up on the wall and stick yourself.
It's amazing what they do.
Fantastic. I love it. Um, uh, it's. Uh, it is spring and that means our sports teams are actively engaged. Our fields look fantastic. I mean, I want to take this opportunity to. Once again, thanks E P W uh, for the fantastic job they do of making all of our schools look good and the fields prepare and um. So they just do a great job and I just really want to continue to thank them for that. Um, also just to let you know that the uh, Fama High School Tennis Courts Project is uh, on schedule. Um, to be completed in October, so um, it's, yeah, we should see scenes movement, um. The after school's out. Uh, moving on that, so that's good. Um. Uh, this Friday, uh, we will hold the annual uh, Fama High School Student Memorial Service. Um, Fama High School National Society honors society students host the event. Um, we recognize all students um, who have lost their lives during their high school careers. And it's just a very thoughtful, very touching um, memorial and. So if you haven't, haven't been, I encourage you to join us on Friday afternoon. I'll get the specifics for you. Uh, our Morse Pond Lawrence and Fama High School students will be performing Monday uh, at the town. Uh, Memorial Day Celebration. Um, that's always fun to see our students out performing. And then, um, believe it or not, it is this time again, Fama High School Graduation is very round of corner, one, two, and third. Uh, and I hope to see everyone at graduation. The wonderful bit.
Can I make two comments? Um, one, I officially feel old because I remember when um, Ms. Casparian. Actually, she was Daria Ames, uh, named to Fama High School, and now she's retiring and I'm struggling with that. But I wish her well and I still can't believe that she will not retire because I'm not old enough to be there. But anyhow, and I also just want to congratulate Todd Olivera as the athletic director, um. Jack Bearden was the athletic director for a long time and he recently passed away, so to see uh, Mr. Olivera uh, slide. Earn that position as athletic director uh, means a lot to um. I think to a lot of people and I just want to recognize that, so thank you very much. Committee member reports.
Oh, we're gonna do that. I have a lot to say.
Okay.
Cause it's a short meeting, good, so I can talk a lot. First thing I'd like to just talk about is the communication goal of committee. Um, has begun work on uh, making, preparing lists for parents. Kelly has started one for the school committee and the school committee members, like already today, we saw. Seba, what was Seba about? Um, I don't know money, so, but, but it's, so Kelly's working on the one for the school committee and. Um, you remember a couple of weeks ago before Leah left, um, one of the things is if you don't know the basic vocabulary, it's hard to talk. And educators know a lot more, so we've, um, putting one together. We're going to ask um, the office of teaching and learning, teachers from elementary and secondary and parents. Um, for input about the list, things you want to know about, and we're, we're going to. Try to do a real good job because the year's winding down, so we want to have it ready. Um, we'll meet over the summer and, and get it out. To, to everybody. We're looking for a way to, as with these flyers, we're looking for a way to. Um, effectively disseminate the list and stuff, so, so we're working on it. Okay, so that's the communication goal. Um, I'll talk about, oh, I'm going to pass these out. You can pass out that way. These little cards coming around, um, it's a Laura Peterson gave me that idea to gamble and stuff. I mean, it makes a bit. They're made out of, of index card, straws, yield, popsicle sticks and peppermints. Aren't equal. These, um, and if you put a paper clip on them or you bend them like an airplane, you know, you fold it. It changes what is called, um, I'm not a scientist, so bear with me here. It changes, um. Force in motion. So this is part of a project that. Um, the eighth graders from Lawrence School, there are sixty-seven of them. Go down and visit third graders in all four elementary schools, um, but go to fourteen different classrooms. And the kids, the eighth graders help the kids put those little cards together. I guess they don't need the peppermints anymore because the cards won't work, but, um, and so they go down to the, with the third grader. And Miss, um, Mr. Porto bought, Porto from the Lawrence School got a grant to build some ramps. And the kids find different, um, ways of rolling down the ramps and make the books a little better. It's just such a fabulous, um. Opportunity for connection between our students and I'm really hoping someone's keeping a list of another thing that, that should come and falls. It just, it just blew away. I'll just tell you one quote from an eighth grader. The thing that amazes me is uh, eighth graders, seventh and eighth graders are harder to catch sometimes, so. Uh, this was a teacher who, who, it's not a teacher, um. It's the woman who's in charge of this program. Her name is Grace Simkins. Okay, so Grace Simkins. Said, um, CAS, which stands for Cross-Age Science Teaching. Is an amazing opportunity for third grade students to work collaboratively with peers led by Lawrence students. To solve problems and answer questions related to force and motion. They love their Lawrence School features. And the hands-on learning opportunities they provide is just so much fun. And this is, um, Grace speaking again, and she says, um, I love watching my past third graders return to teach my current students. So it's, it's a great program. And one more thing, um, you know me, every year I talk about senior projects and today was one of the senior project days. So I went into an English class, um, I also got my money's worth today because we did a fire drill. Right in the middle of the projects, there was a fire blow, so, but Fama was back in quick, so they must have done everything right. Um, so today I heard four s- uh, projects. And I'm going to tell you the, um, the first name and the name of the project and why I find them so fascinating. There was a project by Andrew and it was, um, done about student mental health and stress. Silas reported about personal finance. Elizabeth did report on the effects of divorce on children. And Lauren's report was on composting, um. Her, her, one of her ideas, what, we should look into that a lot more because fertilizer's so hard on the water in her area. Um, another thing I found, you're supposed to be grading their eye contact and their tone. I was so interested in what they were saying. I just listened to what they were saying, but, um. I remember a town meeting, there was a discussion of doing away with plastic utensils at restaurants. So they ought to talk to, um, Lauren about it because she knows her compostable plates and silverware. So anyway, it should, it was amazing listening to her. Um, Silas was talking about when you go off to college. You don't really know how to manage your own money, so you get into trouble and maybe we have some things around. In our district to help, um, get people more experienced with that. Um, Elizabeth compiled, she talked about divorce and she. Compiled a website called You're Not Alone, Fama. So those were just some of the main I'm using here, but I've seen this project many years and I also want to say that the English department. Has developed a wonderful rubric. The rubric's changed from what kind of project they're doing. Like if it's a senior project, it's one rubric and maybe Sonya, if, I, I forget all that, what all the other rubrics are, but. And it's, um, they identify a problem, they go online and they get their information, it's great. Then they have to interview someone. They have to see, uh, they have a proposal to fix a problem or do something about this. So they put an initiative that didn't work and they also put initiative that did. Well, they, then they talk about their initiative. Um, and I really like the part where they have to interview a live person, um, which teaches them how to present themselves. There's just so much role that these products, so I'm going to say it again, go in there. Go in there and you'll just be blown away by what, what, what our kids do. And in my opinion now. In the last two school committees, we've had three things that show us Fama kids helping Fama kids. One is the whole project. The kids went to Hyannis this weekend and, um, that was a students that are prevention project. Um, the senior project, the kids talked about using each other's resources and, um. This thing that I just talked about from BIPs, it's kids working together with kids and that's great. Did I say?
We did. Thank you. Well, it was a short meeting, so it was a perfect time.
Does anybody else have any committee or, Margaret?
Yeah, the social resource book, uh, I think we talked about maybe whether, um, some families have been, um. They uniform the large school, uh, and they take that large school, it grows rapidly, so sometimes even in the middle of the year, they need new uniforms. And if they are not donated, the, the school will take care of purchasing them. Consider of, um, haircuts. They would try to find some way of reducing the haircut within school if they can. And also develop a letter, letting families know that they are allowed a special rate of contest so that their. Uh, students can get into that service. We want to make sure that goes out during the summer. Anything else?
Back to school bags.
I'm sorry?
Back to school bags.
Back to school days.
Just resources and make sure those that might not have resources to ensure they have that maximum school supplies with one, so that they get off the. First phase of school and work them.
That's great. Yeah, I got you. Great. Um, so the budgets of committee met last week, I think it was last week, um, to talk about, um. Capital projects and, um, our projections for what our capital needs will be over the next. The near and far, I'll just say more generally, the near and far. Um, so, uh, not more say on that. And then the other is that, um, June first, next Thursday. At eight AM is, um, the voter registration drive. That's part of the senior breakfast at the high school. So, um, I don't, for years now, I think since the, during the remodel of the high school. Um, the school committee has partnered with the League of Women Voters to sponsor the breakfast for the kids, uh, the seniors. At the high school on their rehearsal day for graduation. And, um, have been registering them to vote at that, at that day. So, um, we're set for the, the voter registration on Thursday at eight. And if anyone wants to come, it'd be great because there's going to be, right now, just me, I'm, I'm still waiting to get back from the league. Oh, that's right, you did. Great. You did. Thank you very much.
If I am off, I will go because I do love going. It's so fun.
Yeah, it's great. It's very easy to get them registered. They just need a little bit of. Guns.
Great. Any other, uh, mini member reports?
Okay, so first time, we should reorganize the school committee with, uh, for officers. Um, so are there any nomination for chair? Uh, Lauren has to do that. Oh, great, perfectly.
Great, perfect. Just want to do it. All right, I am, I'm opening up for nominations for, uh, the chair of the school committee for the, uh. Twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I have any nominations? Harry, um, I'd like to nominate Melissa King.
Margaret, I'd like to over Kelly Welsh.
Are there any other nominations for chair of the school committee for next year?
Do you need seconds? Do you need a second?
He never did.
Okay.
If you want, but I think you're going right through. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. There are no other nominations. I'm going to close nomination for the chair, uh, of the school committee for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, as I call your name, will you please, uh, identify who you are voting for, um, to candidate for Melissa King and Kelly Welsh. Start over here, Margaret.
I'm voting for Kelly Welsh and I would like to make three points. Little one is a new member of the school committee last year. I hope that would be very helpful.
A bunch want to vote yet. I don't think we can do this. You can't, you can't have a discussion when the vote has been opened and closed for a nomination process.
No, because the people at the very end will not have had a chance to make their points before everybody else has already voted. It has to be an open discussion.
Yes, it can't be, once we close the vote, we can't have an individual discussion down the line.
Historically, I don't think we've ever had discussion, so. Prior to closing the vote?
I would close the vote, yeah. So then that's my call. I didn't, I guess I didn't allow a discussion.
But yeah, once the vote is closed, we can, we have a new discussion.
No, uh, otherwise, I mean, whatever points I make can be completely irrelevant because everybody else just cast a vote. So we can't, we can't have, it can't be.
So we have discussion and then vote, right?
Okay, I think I, I did not do that well, so there's. Well, I asked for any other nominations. So if there is supposed to be discussion, then, then I think we should do discussion and then I'll pop her. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're going to have discussion. We are not voting right now. All right, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Do we have to, do we have to close the nominations, reopen the nominations for discussion? I'm asking you.
I'm reopening officially, I'm reopening the, the nominations. So are there any other nominations? If not discussion. Sorry, I did not do that well.
So now, Margaret.
Okay, for anyone. Yeah, so would anyone like to, uh, discuss anything?
Yes, Margaret. Okay, as a member of the school committee, last year I found it, uh, telling is very helpful in terms of helping understand. My roles and responsibility. Also, when it came to, uh, policy discussions, um, I was very impressed with the fact that she was so detailed about every policy. And was, had gone through them clearly and explicitly, and I found that to be a real role model for what I should be doing. Um, and the last thing I would say is that, you know, I hesitate to get in touch with school committee members because those would do work. Um, but Kelly worked part-time, so I found it to be her responsibility, so when I tried to get in touch with her. To find out some information that I need.
Well, I suppose since I nominated Melissa, I would make a comment to that, um. No, I know. You know, but just to keep in with what's going on, um, Melissa, this year, Melissa has been a secretary for years, so she's been. Knowledgeable of what duties of the officer are, and I'm going to say this year. We worked so hard. We had a lot, a lot, a lot of letters to deal with this year and. It's hard because you have to completely stay, um, neutral when you answer them and be on top of them and. She's just had a lot of experience and she's worked hard at the year, so I think it's time for her to move to a position. But yeah, that would be my comment.
Bill, then Mike?
Um, yeah, I, uh. You know, Melissa's our, um, one returning officer from this past year, and has not been chairperson of the committee before. Um, I think you've done a great job showing leadership over the last few years, um, as a new member a couple of years ago. Uh, it's very easy to feel like you're on an island at first, especially if you don't necessarily agree with everything. Or maybe have a, another point of view. Um, I specifically remember a situation or, or a, an instance where, um, you know, Melissa came to me after the side and just said, hey, I just want to let you know, you're, you're not alone in this. And, and that was a moment for me as a, as a school committee member, where I realized that, you know, we, we may all have disagreements, but, you know, we're not alone in this. And I, I, I felt like that was a leadership moment. I think there are, are folks here who have had, um, the chance to be, um, the chair, who have had those leadership moments in the past. And, um, you know, I, I, I think as, as a district, it's time that we have a, maybe a reset. And give somebody a chance to, um, to chair this committee that, that has not, but, but has shown the leadership that she's capable of doing.
And then, if I could, I wanted to piggyback on kind of what Terry had said with Melissa. Um, the last, I want to say, three months or so, we've gotten more communication from teachers, parents, community members. Um, and Melissa, as the secretary, has been, uh, you know, receiving them all, answering them all. And I think at this time, it'd be, she's in a perfect position to move up to chair and kind of take what she's done and keep moving forward.
Any discussion? Okay, we're gonna close the session, uh, and we'll do a roll call vote, and, um, I'll start over here, uh, Margaret?
So.
Chris?
I'll vote for myself. I will vote for myself. Melissa Keith. What a lot.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith. Melissa Keith.
And Melissa has a.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Now I'm gonna turn it back over to you for the other chair, other positions.
Uh, are there any nominations for, for public to just say, thank you all very much. And I recognize that this was a, not a runaway vote, and I wouldn't be here without the guidance of Kelly through the years. So, um, please know that with that, I would like to nominate. Are there any other, uh, nominations for vice chair?
Could I nominate Bill Dorfner for chair, please?
Sure. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, with that, is there any discussion around best chair?
If I could, um, I know that a lot of the information that we're hearing from parents and teachers, uh, community members. There's a few definitions, but one of them, um, is safety. And I think that, um, build knowledge of safety, um, his time in this committee, working with the superintendent, all the, all the, um. Different school administrations would be beneficial as a vice chair, that I feel that's one of, um, one of the concerns we need to address. So, that's why I nominated that one.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, let's vote, Margaret?
Go.
I'll vote for myself again. I'm gonna vote for Kelly and Kelly.
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 Bill.
Bill. I'll vote for myself.
That being said, uh, Kelly had it, so congratulations, Kelly. And I'd like to open, um, are there any nominations for secretary? Okay, to nominate one, sir. Okay. Are there any other nominations for secretary?
Could I nominate Carrie? You want to do it?
No. I did it for years, um.
Then I'll rescind my nomination.
Okay. Do you have another nomination?
I will nominate Susan if she's willing to do it.
I appreciate that, Mike, but I respectfully decline. I have a lot of learning and catching up to do, and I would like to spend this year jumping into that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm also, can I say something else? I also really think everybody on the committee should have a decision at one time or another. I mean, I know with you work, it's really hard to be chair, but I just think everybody should, so, I mean, Margaret's got her feet wet now, is that the expression? If you, if you acclimated, I think so, um, and having been a secretary before, I would gladly be a mentor. Um, so, I mean, I appreciate, I mean, I'd like to have some new, well, that's all, I'm just having that.
Okay. Any other discussion or nominees? Or rehearsals? Let's start the voting, Margaret, let's start.
I guess we're voting still.
That's great. Margaret? Okay. Margaret?
Margaret.
Margaret? Margaret.
Margaret, congratulations. Um, any future requests for, uh, future agenda items or any future questions? I don't even know what I'm doing. Yes.
Uh, just the point of order, now that you are the chair, can we go back to seven oh five to approve the minutes?
Please, yes, let's, let us please approve the minutes. Wait, where are those, what are the topics?
Right after the superintendent.
My mistake, I completely missed that, yes. Let us please, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of May ninth, twenty twenty-three, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay, sorry, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing them, uh, do, is there a approval for the minutes? Um, in favor, say, I have, any of those, any extension, extension, thank you so much. Okay, if there are motions adjourned.
You have to, if the man. Yeah, I'm gonna revisit the notion of last year, I talked about maybe changing the title for the, uh, P I E person, director of opportunity and access. I think the, uh, president of P I E can be controversial and problematic and shouldn't be people understanding it. And I think what we were talking about is, uh, access and opportunity for all students, and so I'd like to revisit that discussion.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was the name that you suggested?
Director of Opportunity and Access.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are there any other, uh, future discussion items?
Harry, we have, um, this on there, on the list. I don't have that on the walls, it's beyond the agenda, is that what you're asking?
Put that on there.
Yeah.
So that's updating?
No, the last two poems I discussed, if we can actually get, and I would love to have the eighth graders and third graders.
Sure.
They're better, just, you can't express their joy and rapport, I mean, they're just.
Okay. Any others?
I just have a question regarding the subcommittees and assignments. Um, would there be an opportunity to discuss the various subcommittees prior to us being assigned to these? Um, there has been a change from when I previously was on the committee, and I'd just like to hear the background. Of the subcommittee, and, and why some of the previous ones were like, oh, okay. Uh, we can definitely do that, we can get that on the next agenda.
Okay, and then there's also, um, the document that I created that has the description. So, uh, so we created this spring, uh, finalized, a document that has all of the subcommittees and assignments, and a description of all of them. When they meet and who, uh, traditionally does them.
That'd be so that we're all, yes. It's on Google Docs, I think you all have access to it, okay? All right.
Confirmation, you said when we're assigned, after we have the opportunity to.
There will be, that will be plenty of opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
On Sunday, you know. Yeah. You might pass late.
Indicate their top three choices, and then the chairman would assign people to the various committees.
That's what I asked them last year.
Oh, yes.
Put our preferences in, but if we all pick that we want to be on budget, not the, okay. Just wanted to use that one.
Policy too, don't you know?
Well, there's. See down policy, everything. I had to wait a year to get on budget, it was such a hot thing when I first started, I wanted it so bad. Send an email to the committee, um, and please take a peek at the Google documents that Kelly, um, worked on. To sort of give me your top three, and then we'll kind of, we'll, there'll be plenty of room for discussion and make sure that, um, hopefully everyone's happy with that. Mike?
Motion adjourned.
I'm looking. Thank you.